Recording in progress.
What's the name of the show?
Who's the most famous person who currently live in the town hall? Currently live in, in by right now?
Oh, I did.
I've heard of it show up.
I don't know.
No, it's always called from here.
Trying to figure that out, because I, I was just telling him, I said, like, um, because Gary asked the other day, he said, why don't we be five guys and run the town hall? I was like.
What do you what?
Why don't we be five guys and run the town hall street? I was like, I was like, I was like, this is like really the gold standard right now. I said, I said, Steve Jobs' final appearance in his life was at a time of all his life, Steve. There has to be someone really, someone really cool, like a comedian, like a comedian or a baseball player.
Well, there are a lot of athletes around here.
Yeah. I know, I know, um, a good chunk of the Yankees live in Parchees.
Couple of them lived in the complex, not, they don't live there anymore, but they give them the complex first open. He opened letters.
And, oh, do you want to test this, see if you can?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll be over there, okay?
Sounds good to me. You hear me?
Can you talk to me?
I'm on Zoom. It's having a Patrick over here. Steve, if you can hear me. You hear me?
Uh, what's the matter as well? I'm like, you're, you're.
Yeah.
What do you mean, you're bored?
What?
Yeah.
Next time we should go for a walk around the parks.
We'll do it outside.
Yeah.
Be outside. It's a shame I was stuck indoors on date.
I know.
Tomorrow will be different, I'll be down at the beach tomorrow.
Sounds nice with that.
Yeah, it should be nice. Updated. It's updated back. Updated. Right time, right.
You know, you definitely spend, you gotta go back to the schedule. Uh, so we're gonna try to reach back out, so we can see, uh, when he's back around. He was interested to come back. He said he, that was like three weeks ago, so we're gonna try to reach out to him maybe tomorrow or Monday. I love that scene.
Can they make it bigger? Screen?
You need headphones?
No, I don't think so.
Alright.
Who's up there, somebody there, see me?
A lady.
Who?
A lady, I don't know who it is. Camo.
Hello. Real envy.
Okay, you know, it's not working.
Steve. Hello. I can't hear him, let me hear Patrick.
What's that?
None of it.
Sorry.
Hi Cam.
Hey, how are you doing?
Good.
I have nowhere, I have no clue where in the world I am, I've literally gone, been at LAX, took a cab, and I'm in my hotel, and I could be anywhere in LA right now, it's just noisy and bright.
It's like one of those guys who raided the cab. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Rye Town Council meeting of April twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
For the Republic of which is.
Which is banned, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as one.
Heavenly Father, please.
Bless this assemblage. Grant us the wisdom to make every decision fair-minded in the best interest for all its residents. Amen.
Thank you. Hope, please call the roll.
Counselperson Pamela Jaffe. Counselperson Jill Axarot.
President.
Counselperson Thomas Nardi.
Here.
Counselperson Lindsay Jackson. And supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Present. Uh, noting that, uh, Pam Jaffe is, uh, joining us via Zoom. Hello, Pam.
Gary, thank you for letting me do this for a business trip.
Well, Pam has pursuant to our, to state legislation on our local law is joining via Zoom, with an acceptable excuse. She's away on business matters. And let's proceed with the rest of the agenda. Adoption of the minutes of March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. If there are no additions or corrections, may I have a motion in a second?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Public hearing on local law number two of the year twenty twenty-three. This is the local law to approve the, um, I should say, establish the position of, uh, a second deputy clerk. The local law, I mean, the state legislation, town law permits, uh, towns to appoint as many as three deputy clerks. We currently have one deputy clerk, and this legislation, uh, permits us to appoint up to three, uh, deputy clerks. And as you're all very aware, we have one of our, uh, current employees who is a clerk will be appointed as the new deputy clerk after the, uh, local law is approved and filed with the Secretary of State. So, um, may I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anybody from the public who wishes to be heard at this public hearing? Debbie, anybody on Facebook?
Nobody's on Facebook.
Okay. Hope, do you want to make a comment since you are the clerk?
Okay. Um, I requested that, um, we'd be able to, um, establish a second deputy clerk and maybe more than one others in the future. Uh, the importance of this is that if I'm absent from my office, that there will be, uh, deputies that will be available to certify documents, which is very important. Uh, people come from long distances sometimes to have a certified copy. If I'm not there, at least Paula, who's my deputy now, could do it. And if Paula's not there and I'm not there, then at least Stephanie, if we do appoint her. Stephanie Masal, my other employee. So it's, that's the reason why I'm requesting that this local law be enacted.
Thank you. Um, anything from the council? Pam up on Zoom? Anything? No? May I have a motion in a second, please?
So.
Second.
Uh, call the roll, please, Hope.
Counselperson Pamela Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Jill Axarot.
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas Nardi.
Yes.
And Counselperson Lindsay Jackson. And supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Yes. You don't have to call Lindsay's name if she's absent.
I know. I didn't know if she came on.
No, she's not. She, she texted. She's, no, she's absent.
Thank you.
Now we have a presentation from Joseph Orlando of the New York State Comptroller's Office to discuss unclaimed funds. And we present this as a public service to the people of the town of Rye. Mr. Orlando, are you on?
Yes, I am, Mr. Supervisor. I hope everyone can hear me. And thank you very much for letting me join in tonight. And thank you, Hope, for connecting us and giving me the opportunity to speak about unclaimed funds. So unclaimed funds, in a nutshell, is money that has been lost. It's been misplaced. You never got a check from the insurance company. You never got an old deposit back, an old apartment. There was money that was left over in a bank account that you haven't used in many, many years. And you're entitled to that money. And in the meantime, we hold on to it at the State Comptroller's Office to keep it safe. So that way, when you are ready to claim it, we can get it back to you. This can also be various forms of stock. It could be from family relatives, for insurance claims, things like that. And it could be anything that we have in our system is over fifty dollars and up. Sometimes you'll receive a notice from the bank, uh, from a former bank that you used to use, saying that you have, you know, quote-unquote, unclaimed funds and to reach out to our office. And most of the time, that's what banks will do. They're not legally required to do it, but most of the time, that is how they proceed. And I'm gonna put in my, into the chat here, my contact information as well. Was I not muted? Was I muted? Okay. Uh, and I also encourage the town to see if they have any unclaimed funds for themselves or for any of the other municipalities in the area. And I also encourage to check for any of the ambulance corps that may serve the town, because oftentimes that can, they can have unclaimed funds themselves. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I wish the new deputy clerk the very best of luck.
Mr. Orlando, I do have a question. Um, I believe our two legislators, Nancy Barr being one of them, are holding local sessions for people to come?
Yes, we will be having one, uh, a week from Thursday at the, uh, Portchester, uh, Community Center with County Executive Vladimir as well.
Great. And he said it was pretty quick and easy.
It is. It's very simple. All I need to run a search on someone is their last name and their first name, and then see if we have a unclaimed fund associated with them for an old address, for a current address, for things like that.
Thank you so much.
Just, uh, repeat. I know that there's a, a website in the Comptroller's Office, and I tell you, I have used it myself and actually have found funds there.
There you go.
Uh, and can you repeat that for the, um, for the people watching or who may see this on video later?
Sure. So I put the link to the website into the chat, which you can feel free to share throughout, you know, however you communicate with town residents. But really, the unclaimed funds are meant to be helpful. It's a way for us to give money back, which is very uncommon for the government. But it's our way to give people the money back that they are entitled to. Various forms of checks, old bank accounts, insurance, uh, claims that never got to them, those kinds of things. And it's just entering your last name and then your first name and seeing if any of the addresses listed there are addresses that you have lived at, currently live at, or for family members and things like that. Those unclaimed funds can be a little tricky, but those are also things that I always tell people to check for mom and dad, for relatives who have passed away, for grandkids and kids themselves, because they also have unclaimed funds.
Thank you. Any other questions, members of the council? Nope. Do we have any, anybody on Facebook at all who have questions?
No comments have been entered.
No comments. Thank you. Mr. Orlando, thank you so much for coming and addressing us. And, uh, we are certainly glad to present this, um, for the people of the town of Rye. And I know that, uh, is it you that will be at, uh, Nancy Barr's?
Yes, I will. I'll be there. And I, if anybody wants to come and talk to me in person about unclaimed funds, because I'd rather do that, I'm more than happy to sit down with them and see if they have any unclaimed funds.
All right. And so what is that date again?
That will be a week, uh, a week from today, actually, at the Portchester Community Center.
Thank you for being with us. Much appreciated.
You're very welcome, Mr. Supervisor, and thank you.
Portchester Senior Center. Yeah.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
You too.
You know, I reached out to him with our Zoom link. Say, why come down?
Yeah, well, he's gonna be here next week.
Right. Just go.
Okay, um, now we have a resolution setting a date for a public hearing for local law number three. This is a.
We missed, we skipped over the community cleanup.
We did. I just went over that. Um, let, let's finish this. We'll go back to that. Local law number three regards, uh, residency requirement for the office of Deputy Receiver of Taxes. And if you read the resolution, it's not very complicated. We will be establishing, we have established the position of Deputy Receiver. And for many, many years, that position was filled very ably by Carol Chouens, who sadly passed away at the end of last year. Normally, uh, a deputy receiver, as a deputy clerk, is a, um, has to be a resident of the town, as an officer of the, of the town, and has to be a resident of the town. And by local law, the town has the, um, the right to reestablish the residency requirements, which this does, uh, because the, and we're seeking to do this because, um, the person who we intend to approve as, actually, who will be appointed by the tax receiver as deputy receiver, does not currently live in the town. So we, so the new residency requirement will be that they reside in the county of Westchester in the state of New York. And, uh, we will have a, we are setting the date for a public hearing for next month, uh, on May eighteenth. So, uh, anybody, does anybody have a question, comment? We have a motion in a second to set the date for the public hearing at May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at six PM.
So.
I'll second.
Thank you. Hope call the roll, please.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yep.
Counselperson Axarot.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
And supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Now going back, Community Cleanup Day is April twenty-ninth. And Pam, this is yours.
All right, sorry. Just suddenly doing myself, so I don't get the street noise. This will be our, oh my goodness, third year of concerted community cleanups. We are working across the municipality. We've got sites in the Marineak, in Portchester, two in Rybrook, one being, of course, um, Crawford Park itself, and then one being the Senior Center. And asking people to come out and help beautify our local environment, whether it be by going into the local waters in the Marineak and helping us, you know, relieve those pathways of pollution and pollutants, um, by which I mean a lot of plastics and invasive vines. Or it's going to plant flowers to make the Senior Center gorgeous and make our neighbors smile every time they go there. Coming here to Crawford Park to weed and help us kill new garden. Um, I believe that our Director of Grounds and Facilities is going to be working on container gardens this year. And then in Portchester, once again, going by the Marina and areas to clean up litter and local pollution. And I think there is some planter gardening as well there, too. So it should be a lot of fun. It may rain next Saturday. So please do sign up. There's a QR code on the screen. We'll drop it into the chat. Um, but we'll let you know if it's going to be delayed one day.
All right. Questions and comments from the board? No. Nope. Hope, hope to see everybody there. Uh, this is always a really nice community event, and it, it helps each of our communities. City of Rye, the Marineak slash Ryneak, Portchester, Rybrook, and of course Crawford Park in the town of Rye, Village of Rybrook.
Again, I did forget to mention, the city of Ry site is Edith Reed Wildlife Center. Sorry about that.
It's gonna be, City of Rye is, is at Edith Reed. The Marineak is at the Tompkins Avenue Bridge, Portchester at the waterfront. The Marinac is at the Tompkins Avenue Bridge, Portchester at the waterfront, uh, the Ry Brook Senior Center and Crawford Park. Those are the locations. So, thank you. And thank you, Pam, and thank you for your leadership in, in our sustainability efforts.
Well, I want to thank Debbie and I want to thank Brian, who's our coordinator, and all the site captains. They're doing an amazing job. Um, it is a self-sustaining initiative now. And we are setting regular dates, um, whether it be going forward for the last weekend in April, the last weekend of Earth Week, let's call it, and then the third weekend of October, I believe Debbie, we said going forward would be our fall initiative. Just so people can always set their calendars and know that there'll be some sort of great community activity to help us keep our area beautiful.
And just FYI, uh, at the Ry Town Park Commission, uh, Tuesday night, Brian made a presentation for the Sustainability and Cleanup Day. Okay, uh, no other questions, moving on. A resolution authorizing, um, the supervisor to enter into a contract with Peter Landy uh, for the rehabilitation of the Crawford Park driveway. The information is all in the, in the agenda package. Where the, the rehabilitation of the driveway, uh, went out to bid uh, and supervised by, um, James Nattorelli of Dahl-Frogfeld Engineering. And bids came in. There's a memo on file indicating that the low bidder was, uh, Peter Landy Incorporated of Hawthorne, with a low bid of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-five doll, dollars. And, uh, Dahl-Frogfeld Engineering has worked with them, this firm previously on other projects, finds them very reputable. And as the low bidder, um, uh, they will be awarded the contract as soon as we authorize it. So, any questions from the board? If not, um, may I have a motion in a second?
A second.
Let's call the roll.
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yep.
Councilperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Councilperson Nordy?
Yes.
Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes. Um, our last resolution is to authorize a summer intern for the Ry Town Court, Mr. Stephen Cochran. Uh, Debbie, I think you worked with Tony on this. You want to say anything about this?
Uh, this is a, an extern uh, who is working with Judge DeFabio. That, um, I think he may have started this spring and, uh, we're, we'll, we'll be working with him. This is part of his, uh, educational requirement.
Not Judge DeFabio's educational, Stephen Cochran's educational requirement.
Thank you for making, making sure I have the reference correctly. And we want to make sure that since, uh, Mr. Cochran is not an employee technically of the town, he is a volunteer intern. We want to make sure that he's covered by our insurance and he has an official standing.
Volunteer extern?
Yes.
I said intern at first. You corrected me for extern. You said intern. I corrected you for extern. I don't know what the difference is, but there you have it. Any questions? If not, motion in a second, please? Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Um, reports. Charles, you have an assessor's report?
Yes. Good evening. Uh, first, I'd like to say that the taxable status date is coming up very quickly. We need all homeowners or anyone applying for an exemption to be in by May first. Our office hours are eight thirty to four. Uh, we also accept emails. Uh, that's assessor@townoveriny.com. Um, we give a little leeway time, as long as the application's in, to bring any supporting documentation in. Um, and secondly, I've been in the position for a little over a month now. I'm very happy to have met a bunch of people at Town Hall, a lot of homeowners, different people. And it's been a pleasure to meet everyone and, uh, hope to see a couple more people stop by the office. And, uh, that's all I have for this meeting.
Camille, Crawford Park?
Good evening, everyone. Um, tonight I have actually two reports, both brief. Um, the first one is the standard one that we have each month. And this will take us through how many inquiries we've had. I just want to say that the numbers represent anything that is in the reservation system as of today. All right, so in terms of inquiries, uh, we've had a hundred and sixty-one cumulative inquiries, uh, through April twentieth. Just down slightly from last year, which is at one sixty-three, but we're not too concerned. Um, we are having an average of eighty-five inquiries a month, which is a lot, a lot. And bookings are also up. Uh, we are at a hundred and eighteen uh, bookings year-to-date. We have eleven proposals pending. And, uh, we're still holding strong at five events for, uh, next year, twenty twenty-four. The number of events, municipal events where we waived the fees, as of April, there have been forty-nine. And the fees waived is a hundred and one thousand, six hundred. Okay, which is pretty much the way it was last year as well. Any questions before I move on? Okay. So this is the new format. We introduced it last month in terms of our revenue. And two things that are different from what we've done in the past is that this is, the numbers are year-to-date, end of March, as opposed to year-to-date this week. Um, it's just been done, uh, the request of date for their accounting to be uh, more aligned, our accounting to be more aligned with theirs. So the first group of numbers are payments received, that's cash in, in the past three months. Uh, we've deducted the security deposits and the staff gratuities. So the adjusted revenue number is thirty-three thousand, three hundred. The rental fees paid, and this is for any events that have been executed. So any events in the past twelve, twelve weeks are reported in these numbers. And we are at, um, seventeen thousand, five hundred. Our labor costs for these events, just the ones that were executed, uh, seven thousand. And the adjusted revenue minus the labor costs is now at fourteen thousand, two hundred. And the dollar amount, whoops, sorry, didn't want to do that. Um, the rental fees waived, now, this number will be slightly different than what we looked at on the first slide, but that's because this is uh, just through the end of March, as opposed to everything we have in the system right now. Okay, and I have another slide in the next, uh, presentation that will take you through who's actually receiving the benefit of the waived fees. Okay, any questions? Nope? Yeah? And, okay, you want to move me on? So the next report, also brief. Um, we put together at the request of, um, the council, inquiring as to who is using our facility, um, how are they using it, et cetera. So first, we'll take a look at who in the town of Ry is using the park. Um, we went through all of our records and these, the time period for this report is the past fifteen months. Because just to do this year really wasn't going to be an accurate picture. So I went back to January of twenty twenty-two. Uh, and that's, these are the numbers you're going to be seeing in the next couple of slides. So out of all the events that the town people have utilized the park for, Portchester is in the lead with fifty-five percent of the, um, events held. Ry Brook is pretty close, second at forty-two. Uh, the big difference there, you'll see, if you look at the breakdown of the resident, nonprofit, and municipal, is that Portchester really, um, has an extreme number for municipal, and that's based on the fact that the Portchester school system uses us almost on a weekly basis. Questions on that? Oh, and Ry Neck, I'm sorry, just three percent with nine events.
Can you just reiterate? Um, you say that Portchester uses it a great deal for municipal. This is using Crawford as a benefit for the township, correct? They are able to use it at no cost?
Correct. It's no charge. It's the Portchester Union Free School District administrators. And then they have, they have conferences with the various teachers. Okay? Okay, so now, we look at who are the user groups. And we've narrowed it down to four here, and this is for all areas. Uh, so we have residents, um, the non-residents, municipal, and the nonprofit. Uh, breaking down with the residents using thirty-nine percent of all the events. Non-resident is only at fifteen percent. Nonprofit, fourteen, and again, the municipal number is, is right up there at thirty-two percent. And I've also reflected the number of events for each and the, the revenue that we brought in for them. This is a deep dive. Um, I can take you through it if you'd like. Um, but what we did was we went through each of the patron categories and paid particular attention to the town of Ry, and we were able to break it out through the village of Portchester, Ry Brook, and Ry Neck. Uh, it gives you a pretty good feel for who's actually using Crawford. Um, the municipal ones is actually part of the, um, thirty-nine percent that you see there. We have non-residents at fifteen percent, and those are the different towns that the people have come from. We even have somebody from Tennessee, Colorado, New Jersey, and a handful from Connecticut. Um, and then nonprofit, I broke that out separately just for the purposes of showing you that we kind of have two categories in nonprofit. We've got resident and non-resident. Okay? Questions?
Yeah, I'm curious, what are people from Tennessee or, I mean, is that word of mouth?
No, but you know what it is, and it's happened a couple of times, is these people lived in Ry Brook or lived in the town of Ry. They've moved to Jersey, Colorado, et cetera. They want to have a family event and they come back here. So that's how, that's how those unusual states
Or are they so pleasantly surprised?
It's a little of both, um, because many of them have relatives here, which is why they choose to do the events here.
Right.
And I'm sure it's at the recommendation of the, the local people.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
But yeah, it's interesting. Really is. So. Anything else on that one? Okay, and this was the last request, Gary. Actually, you had asked me the other day. You was, you said you wanted to know what the percentages was and who was actually using the different, um, locations within the park. So forty-four percent of our reservations are from the, for the mansion. Forty-nine percent is for the pavilion. Six percent is for the sports field. And then we do have a few events where people, um, basically block out the whole park. So the mansion and the pavilion, et cetera, falls into that category. So it's an interesting breakdown, I think. Um, but the sports field might have been a little bit higher, but we're happy with the six percent for now. I have to thank my team because they did a lot of the number crunching.
Can I ask you, um, just a question? I'm curious how these figures in terms of usage line up with our costs? So, like, you know, how much of our budget is going to maintain the mansion versus the sports field? And is that, you know, is it only a small percentage relative to the entire pie for the sports field? So that's why it, do you know what I'm saying? Is there a correlation?
I don't have access to or any knowledge of the other expenses in there. I can help you with anything you'd like to know, what, what's executed here.
And you've done a wonderful job, I, you know, and I appreciate it. Just sort of thinking that I would love to kind of juxtapose those two numbers to see.
You know, I, I really like the fact that of the mansion events, uh, residents are seventy-seven and non-residents, twenty-seven. Uh, putting aside the municipalities, I think that's really, really, really good percentage.
And I did want to mention to you, Gary, it's not in any chart, but, um, the last concert that we had with the Philharmonic last week, when I got the, the zip code report, the majority were from Portchester and Ry Brook. Yeah.
Excellent. That's terrific.
Residents, you know, we have heard that other council members have heard, you know, complaints or concerns and the numbers seem to indicate that they were doing well in terms of making sure that residents have use of the facilities and, you know, are taking advantage, able to take advantage of it. So I'm happy to see that.
One of the hardest part in, in what we do, myself and, and the team, is that we've got to tell people, sorry, there's no availability. That's a hard, that's hard. But it happens and we try to accommodate them either with a different location or a different date, you know, wherever we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terrific report. Vic, anything for, uh, parks and facilities?
Oh, thank you. Hi, um, my name is Candy La Mejia. I'm a park attendant here at Crawford Park. And I'm here to discuss the concession stand, which we're hoping to open on June the first. We had to do a little bit of estimate as to this year's opening days for our concession stand, which we're hoping to have open for three months. Uh, the sheet that you guys have in front of you has a breakdown of the permit, what the POS system would cost, the food expense, and possibly the staff expense. And we're hoping to be open eighty-nine days out of the three months. But since we do have events in the mansion and in the pavilion, and depending on the weather, we might not be open all eighty-nine days that we currently are thinking we would have open. Our opening food expense that we were thinking we would have would be two hundred and twenty-three dollars with fifty cents. And we would have the staff here from nine to five, which would be two part-time employees, four hours each. And, um, so they would not be full-time employees. They would be part-time, which are the current staff that we have here, working the concession stand, either in the pavilion or in the mansion. Um, from last year, we were only open thirty days. And, um, since we started late, we started in August. And we tried to stay open until September, um, the twenty-ninth. But, uh, due to the weather, everybody had gone back to school. So we didn't have many sales from the concession stand, so we, um, didn't have that many sales, so we didn't do as what we thought we would do for that opening for the concession stand of last year. Um, I don't know if you guys have any questions?
You say three months. When, when, when are your proposals to start and finish?
Uh, June first through, um, hopefully September first. Because that's when everybody really does go back to school. Usually, since we have the summer camps here, that's where we do get some of the profit, uh, from the concession stand.
Why not in September, say? On the weekends, on Saturday and Sunday.
Well, we were thinking of that, but again, if we have events in the pavilion and in the mansion, that would reduce the days that we might be able to open. And if the weather, if it rains, we usually close down because no one's at the park.
Nobody's at the park, yeah. But if you don't have an event going on, there's no But if you don't have an event going on, there's no reason not to be open on a, you know, in September until we winterize the pavilion.
Right, correct.
Yeah, I can do weekends.
Correct, that's what we're hoping for.
It's in a state of flux. We're going to see how it operates, and then, you know, if it warrants it, then they'll open.
I'm a little concerned. So for 2022, we had 30 days, and we had sales of $24.78. We're hoping to be open for 89 or let's say 90 days to make the math a bit easier. If we were to equal what we did last year, we would be at $7,500. Even assuming we make double that, we aren't even going to be able to cover the staffing costs. Is that correct?
Well, the staffing, that's already in the budget because there are the park attendants that are already on staff. So they're not, I don't know.
Just redirecting them, you're not doing anything out of that. Extra money for them.
Right.
And also, I'm sorry, Vic Federico, Director of Grounded Facilities. Last year, we caught the end of the band camp. We didn't catch the camps last year. The camps, they have, we have hundreds of kids here, June, July, August. We, we didn't catch that last year. So with the camps knowing that this is open, we expect to do great sales-wise.
Do we have projected or hoped for revenue, a goal?
I won't, I won't even give that because we don't have enough information.
I, I hope it's a great success. You know, I've had my reservations, I've said them publicly. Not in the staff, that in no way reflects on the staff. Just as a cost-benefit analysis, it's a numbers game for me in terms of whether this is viable or beneficial. So I would love to see myself proven wrong. I wish you guys all the success in the world. I really hope it goes very well. We'll see.
My view is that in addition to possibly making money, we're providing a service for the community that they might not otherwise have. They're at the park, they're hungry. They, instead of going over to Ry Ridge or driving the car and, and all that, we'll have something there for them as a service to the community, which we're not giving away. And hopefully, we will at least break even and with a little luck, make, make a little bit of a profit.
I'd like to add that the, that the staff have been using the facility that we created for the snack bar at our concert series indoors. So that at every concert and intermission, we are selling, we have a, we're selling beverages and snacks for a complete profit. So, and I think, and I think, you know, this is a startup. So they're, you know, this is all learning how, how to do this. And I think that they are, have gained a lot of information. We'll know a lot more after this season.
And it's not, you're saying it's sort of the same staff? So there's no need to have people, people aren't being pulled away from certain duties to do this? And then that leaves, we're managing to?
If it's, we have a bunch of staff either doing events or for the pavilion events. If there are staff that are free and they're not working any events, then we'll ask them if they can work the concession stand. So they divide their time working either concession, and if they're not working the concession, they're able to work an event either in the mansion or the pavilion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Candy, very well done. Do you have something else, Vic?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, also for the concession, it will be open for eight-plus summer events, concerts, movies, which will be all pretty much profit. Things going on outside, if you haven't noticed, the pavilion is being painted. They started today. The cottage roof was started today. Trying to think, we have Jane Dubrow and Congregation Emanuel coming on, on this Sunday. They're bringing their seventh grade to do cleanup because they can't make next week. So, okay, that's about all I have.
What else about the, the garden?
Out at the wildflower garden, I hope soon to be passed by the friends. We're going to do it anyway because we have extra area on the side of the garden. But we're going to put container gardens out there, totally enclosed with netting and gates so they can be locked. And it's going to be used as a culinary teaching garden, and that's what the gardens will be. We've talked to the, our teacher downstairs, the culinary teacher downstairs. She's excited to use elementary schools to teach them how to grow and bring to the table.
Thank you. David, finance report.
You have the receivables report through March. It reflects the, it adds the school taxes that will be, may call for the end of April. The school taxes outstanding through March is 1.65 million, which is, is what they normally are each year, sometimes a little bit higher. But that just reflects, there's no large taxpayers that have outstanding taxes for school taxes. That's village of Porchester, the Porchester School District has the largest amount. But overall, our outstanding taxes are just under 2.6 million, which is again, it's 1.19% of the total levy. So we are in very good shape there. And Nick will tell you, we're collecting the county taxes in April. And that's about 30, 32 million. The county taxes and the town taxes are billed and collected in, in April of, of each year. So we're in good shape on that front, and we're finalizing open audit items, and everything looks good.
Thank you. Any questions of the controller from the council? Thanks, Dave. Let me jump to you. Jeff, talk about the, the INREM. There we are.
Hi, Jeff Dinder, Town Attorney and Special Counsel for INREM Pursuit. And much of what I do is seeking collection of outstanding INREM receivables. As of right now, I don't have the number off the top of my head of what we've collected, but we've whittled down the number of delinquent property owners to about four, which represents roughly $50,000 in outstanding receivables, and we're continuing to pursue that.
Those are the ones that was, would be, would be scheduled to go INREM in July if, if they don't pay.
Right, and by scheduled to go INREM, what that really means is we bring a lawsuit and seek to foreclose on the properties and then, you know, continue to negotiate in front of the judge or in front of, in the court in that, in the context of a, of a larger lawsuit. Or if the property owner defaults or loses their case, then we would seek to take the property, sell it, pay the taxes, and reap the windfall, which we don't seek to do, but we want to collect those taxes because it's important to the school kids and it's important to all of our municipal services.
I'm guessing that we're really not going to need to go into INREM in July at the rate you're collecting the taxes.
I don't anticipate it, but there are still outstanding properties that, that owe, and my marching orders are to keep going until we collect it.
Who gave you those marching orders?
Ah, no comment.
Thank you, Jeff. Did you have anything else while you were up there?
Ah, no.
Nick, are you on, receiver of tax report?
Yes, I am, Mr. Supervisor. Good evening, can you hear me, everybody?
Clear.
Okay. Just remind everybody that April, as Dave said, April is marching on. It's already two-thirds finished. So if you haven't paid your county and town tax, please do so. And due to the fact that the last day is on a weekend, you have a grace period. You can pay on May 1st without any penalty. That includes online. I have adjusted the software to allow you to pay with no penalty on May 1st online. So it's all clear for you. If not, you'll leave it off in the front of the town or bring it up in the office up till May 1st without any penalty. So we are like about one, we have 10 million in so far without the bank. So that's an indication that the average taxpayer is making payments, but there's still some money out there. So everyone, please, the municipalities depend on this money for their services and operations. So every little bit helps. Any questions for me?
Nope, thank you, Nick.
Okay, have a good evening.
You too. Hope your report is submitted. Do you have anything else to add?
Nothing else to add.
Any comment from anybody in the audience? Anybody on Facebook?
There's, there's no comments entered on Facebook.
Okay, comments from the council? Anything?
No, the only thing I'd say is, people that are, is there anybody on Facebook, do you know?
Oh, there are five people watching.
Five people only. Put the word out, let people, people from the town of Rye really need to listen to our, our meetings and really should be commenting. You know, seeing us outside, out on the streets, sometimes a little too late. So make your comments and spread it to let them know that we're live on Facebook or on the town site also, right?
Oh, absolutely. And we're, we're streaming on YouTube and several other, I think we're streaming on Instagram. And Patrick could come here and tell us the entire list of all of the social media that we are live streaming on.
Really get involved and watch our meetings and, you know, make comments. That's all I have to say.
Come and talk to us, actually. We got an email in from Porchester Television wanting to tell us about what their activities were. And the easy answer was come and join a town meeting and tell us what you're doing. We want to hear what's going on in the township. So I think that's great, Tommy. I agree 100% that people should listen in and they should come and report on what they're up to.
I don't have anything at the present time, so. Motion to adjourn?
So much.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned, next meeting is May 18th. Thank you.